That Lisette Fernandez, payroll technician two in the finance department, has been selected as the 2024 employee of the year. Since joining Kings County in March 2022, Lisette has become an essential part of the payroll team, working closely with the payroll manager and other departments to ensure accurate and timely processing of payroll for all county employees. Lisette was previously recognized as an employee of the quarter for her exceptional customer service, proactive problem solving, and professionalism under pressure. She consistently goes above and beyond to support employees and departments throughout the organization, demonstrating compassion, responsiveness, and a strong commitment to excellence. Her nomination by another department is a testament to her outstanding support and cross-functional collaboration. One notable example of her dedication involved quickly securing urgent Cobra information for an employee facing a sensitive situation. Without hesitation, Lisette coordinated directly with the benefits provider to ensure the necessary documents were provided promptly, easing the employee's concern and demonstrating her calm and collaborative approach, even under pressure. Lisette's positive attitude, reliability, and consistent willingness to assist with any task make her a standout employee and a true asset to the finance department and Kings County as a whole. We're honored to recognize Lisette Fernandez as the 2024 Kings County Employee of the Year. Please join me in congratulating her on this well-deserved achievement. With that, we would like to present Lisette with a commemorative plaque and one week of paid vacation leave. Please join me in congratulating her as the 2024 Kings County Employee of the Year.
I don't really have much to say other than just thank you and I'm grateful to be here every day and work with everyone, just always trying to learn and just get better. So, thank you so much.
On that, we'll do a picture. Now, we're gonna do something new this year. Administration has the cow. Being the cow travel with us. Take picture with us. It'll be our second picture. So resistant?
Hey, move.
Don't forget, King's County.
County.
I don't know about letting you have.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so this is our first time ever we do the employee of the year award. So, you know, we were trying to get ways to kind of improve our employee of the quarter recognition program. So we said, hey, how about we add another layer and do an employee of the year? So from the employee of the quarters, they have a chance to win employee of the year. This is our first time ever. So Lisette's actually winning for 2024, so 2025 will be next year. And the board selects the candidate. It's one week, so it's forty hours. So it's one week. So it's one week paid off. She has one year to use it or lose it. So, so we will, we will, we look forward to all the nominations moving forward. Department heads kind of listening in. If you have any employees, please send them our way to the employee recognition committee. So Lisette will get a week paid off and we're just kind of grateful to have this opportunity, the board to approve it.
No, no, she doesn't.
So, thank you, Lisette. I'm just kind of a little note. I always message Lisette when I'm late on my time card because it's their due by Tuesdays. And so it's Monday. Yeah, so Lisette's always very helpful. So I really appreciate Lisette with my lateness. So the board is the one who actually selects the employee of the year. And so we announced it on the employee barbecue, but this is the formal recognition through the board supervisor meeting.
Very good. We'll move on now to unscheduled appearances. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board on items of interest within its board jurisdiction and which are already on the agenda. Or not already on the agenda. Sorry about that. The board will not answer any questions impromptu and concerns and complaints will be referred to the appropriate staff. For items which are on the agenda, members of the public are provided with an opportunity to address the board with each item brought up for discussion. Speakers are limited to two minutes on their topic. So two minutes are allowed. We have a clock going to be on the screen up there and over here. Keep that in reference. And we're gonna try to enforce that a little, little more as time goes on if we have big meetings. But for the most part, we're pretty vague on a, on a slow day. So do we have anybody that has?
I have no written correspondence, but I do have speaker cards. The first one is Lisa Lewis.
Morning, Lisa.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Lisa Lewis, Kings County Behavioral Health. We find ourselves in the middle of Mental Health Awareness Month, and I just wanted to take a moment today to sort of change the focus. We're usually focusing on those that we provide services to and our community and building our system of care. And this morning, I just wanted to take a moment to call out those who provide the care, those that we work with, both in the behavioral health department, those who contract with us, and those who are our colleagues. I'm thinking of our substance use disorder counselors, our peer support specialists, case managers, therapists, psychologists, our psychiatrists and psychiatric nurse practitioners, those who work behind the scenes in billing and contracts, our outreach workers. And then those who are our colleagues who work in public guardian, who work in the courts, who work in emergency rooms, who work in psychiatric hospitals. I want to say thank you to them today and to recognize the incredible work that they do. Most of the work that they do is done behind a wall of silence, so they can tend to be very invisible. But what they do requires a lot of personal dedication. They usually go into this field because it matters to them, because it's something that has touched them personally in their lives. So not only are they recovering from something, but they are reaching out to provide care to others. And I just want to acknowledge them today, to thank them, to say that we see you, we value you, and your mental health is also incredibly important to us. We want to make sure that we have a healthy workforce and that those who are providing mental health care are healthy themselves. So thank you for all that you do. We want to say to you that if you are in need, please reach out to us. Please don't hesitate. We want to make sure that you are getting everything that you need. As we say in our department, health begins at home. So if you are not a healthy employee, if you're not a healthy care, mental health care worker, it's incredibly hard to provide the services. We want to just acknowledge them today. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
The next speaker is Rebecca Bell.
Good morning, Rebecca.
Rebecca Bell Hanford. I read an article this morning in regards to somebody that was trusted. She, they were a caregiver and they recently were arrested for elder abuse. But this is also someone that was elected, not by vote, but selected to represent an organization. Now, accountability, I know I've had this speech before, but it's even more imperative, whether it's by job, through public, private caregiving, through elected officials, politicians, county, whether it's deputy or police. We trust you guys to take care of us and leave your egos aside and try to focus on the real people. Because you have to, I see so many departments not working together because I'm here, I'm in control, this is, you know, stuff like that. I know better. But if we worked better as a team, maybe our society would be better. Like for notice the uptick in crime. To be honest, I've lived here since seventy-eight to ninety-five, and I have never seen so much violence until recently. I mean, it's kind of crazy, the last almost less than a year, so much. I might as well be Fresno, to be honest. Might as well, we don't have the people to call ourselves a metropolitan area, but we do have the violence now that it's getting worse. And we need to come together and come up with a plan to try to help each other to make it better and focus on us, not ourselves. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's all the speaker cards that I have. It doesn't appear anyone online has their hand raised.
There'll be online. Anybody in the audience like to add to this one discussion? Jeff Robinson. How are you today?
Don't start my clock. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Oh, I won't be long. We had the animal issue that was reported here in front of your board. I think it was last week or maybe the week before, but Commander Ferrier went out and, and met with some of the neighbors and we ended up actually seizing the three dogs that were involved under, under an animal law. And, and so we're working on it. And I just wanted to report that back to your board because I know that was reported here in open session. So we're working on it and we're working with the, the neighborhood out there to make sure that that doesn't happen again. Just wanted to inform your board. Thank you.
Thank you. I know that this year has been extremely tough around my house because people keep dropping off cats when they're showing up. And my wife has taken it upon herself to feed them all. And so we have a lot of cats.
We will get her a volunteer application.
And some are pregnant and, yeah, it's.
It's good that you put that out.
One or two, but.
We, what we can do with the cats is we can help through a program to get them at least spayed and neutered and released back so they can't repopulate.
She is working on that now. So that's good. She is a good caretaker if I get it. Cause I, yeah, we can't have kittens run all over the place. Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Seeing none, we'll move on to item four, which is approval of the minutes. And that's item A, report out of closed session from regular meeting, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There was nothing to report from that meeting.
You very much. Item B, approval of the minutes from regular meeting, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve is amended.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Supervisor Robinson, second by Supervisor Nevs. The amendment was a small mistake where I voted as absent, but I just voted as abstain. That's changed. So Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Robert Thayer.
Abstain.
Three in favor, one abstention, and one absent. We'll move on now to consent counter. All, all items listed on the consent counter are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. If a board member has a question and requests additional information or wishes to comment on an item, the vote should be, not be taken to after the questions have been addressed or comments have been made. And the, and the comments from the public have, comments from the public have an opportunity to comment on the consent calendar items. So what's the word pleasure?
The move, Mr. Chair.
Move by Supervisor Nevs. Any comments from the public? On the consent counter? Nothing? Second by Robert Thayer. Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Robert Thayer.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Item passes for favor, one absent. We'll go to regular calendar and it's item A, fire department. And we have. Blake, morning Blake.
Morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Today, we're here for the second reading of our ordinance changes. The fire department is requesting the adoption of proposed changes to the county ordinances, ensuring they accurately represent the safety of the citizens, community members, and any person passing through Kings County. These changes also include adoption of the new fire hazard severity zones, which is required by the California Department of Forestry and fire protection pursuant to government code five one one seven eight. Our recommendation is to waive the second reading and adopt ordinance seven one three, updating chapter ten of the county code of ordinance, ordinances. Quick background, as we mentioned on the last item. Approximately a year ago, it was discovered while the, that while the board of supervisors approved the most recent edition of the California Fire Code in 2023, it was not formally adopted by ordinance as required, and that's, that's on our department. This discovery initiated a comprehensive review of chapter ten of the Kings County Code of Ordinances, which governs fire prevention and protection regulations within the county. Over the past year, in collaboration with county council, the fire department conducted a thorough evaluation of chapter ten to ensure alignment with current local, state, and federal fire safety laws. The proposed revisions modernized the code, providing clear regulatory guidance for both the fire department and the public. These updates support operational consistency, improve public transparency, and enhance overall fire prevention and the safety within Kings County. And I have a summary of each item below. But that's, that's it. We're just ready to finish this off.
Thank you, Blake. Our pleasure. You'll make a reading again?
Who's responsible? Waive the reading?
Move by Supervisor Nevs. Second by Supervisor Robinson. Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Joe Nevs.
Yes, after public.
Sorry about that. Any public comments on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Robert Thayer.
Yes.
Okay, that's four in favor, one absent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
How'd the field, the boot go?
It went really well, actually. I don't remember the exact dollar amount, but I was counting with the guys the other day, counting up the money. So it went really good. One of their best years, they said.
How many days did you do it? I know you were in Lemoore last Saturday.
I, I don't know exactly. I'm not a hundred percent sure. That's the one day that I know of.
Thank you. Well, on now to item B, which is human resources. Carolyn Lees. Good morning, Carolyn.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Carolyn Lees, Human Resources Director. I am here today to recommend that the board authorize me to sign the side letter of agreement with the Detentions Deputy Association. The county's memorandum of understanding with the Detentions Deputy Association was approved with terms beginning July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirty, twenty twenty-six, which included a re opener to discuss whether pre and post shift activities completed by sworn officers need to be compensated. Additionally, the association filed a grievance with the sheriff and on April fourth, twenty twenty-five, and a government claim on April seventh, twenty twenty-five. To maintain proper facility operations, the county must ensure staff are at their assigned posts in the Kings County jail, ready to work at the designated shift start times. To accomplish this operational goal, the county recognizes that staff, staff must arrive before their scheduled shifts to complete necessary preparatory activities and remain, remain after their shifts are completed, concluding responsibilities. Effective March first, twenty twenty-five, the association's sworn personnel, Detentions Deputy one SCC, Detentions Deputy one-two, Senior Detentions Deputy, and Detention Sergeant, assigned to perform shift work activities that include providing and or require relieving as part of their duties, shall receive a total of point three hours of overtime per day for, for pre and post shift activities. This excludes employees in specialty positions or positions that do not require pre and post shift activities. Also effective March first, twenty twenty-five, the association's non-s sworn personnel, Detentions Assistant, Detentions Technician one-two, and Senior Detentions Technicians, assigned to perform shift work activities that include providing and requiring relieving as part of their duties, shall receive a total of point two hours of overtime per day for, for pre and post shift activities. This excludes specialty positions or positions that do not require pre and post shift activities. The attached, the side letter which was included with the board effectively closes the re opener negotiations specified in Article sixteen, section eight of the MOU and resolves both the grievance and government claims submitted by the association regarding this matter. The total cost from March first, twenty twenty-five through the end of the fiscal year is approximately sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars. Costs associated with the overtime provisions will vary based on staffing of eligible positions. Ongoing costs beyond the current fiscal year will be absorbed by the department through the budget process. I would like to thank the Detentions Deputy Association, Human Resources Staff, the Administration Office, County Council's Office as well, and the Board of Supervisors for their efforts regarding this matter. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you, Carolyn. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for direction.
We'll just present it, Mr. Chair.
Move by Supervisor Nevs, second by Supervisor Robinson. Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert Thayer.
Yes.
Four in favor, one absent. Thank you, Carolyn. We'll move on now to item C, Public Works Department, and we have Mitchell. Morning, Mitchell.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mitchell Cabrera, Chief Engineer with the Public Works Department. Before your board this morning, with the first item, a request to approve the planned specifications for the Hanford and Lemoore Library remodel project, as well as authorizing the Public Works Department to advertise this project for construction. A little bit of history on the project, in the end part of twenty twenty-two, the library was notified that they were successful in two grant applications they had submitted for funding for the Hanford and Lemoore Library branch, branches. Both applications were to update existing infrastructure at both of the main libraries for the county. After that, Public Works Department went out to a request for proposals for consultants for design. Four Creeks was the awarded architect that has been working since then. January thirtieth of twenty twenty-four, they were awarded the project for design and were before your board this morning with a complete set of plans and specifications that are ready to go out to construction. The project is funded through the grant. The numbers shown on the fiscal impact are a little high. They're actually a little bit lower. These were, these were done in order to have a good estimate of where we were at. Approximately eight million would be grant funded and seven hundred thousand would be non-grant funded for the Hanford Library and five million or four point seven grant funded for Lemoore and four hundred and twenty thousand non-grant funded items. The non-grant funded items will be covered by the library's funds, library contingencies, as they refer to it. We plan to go to advertise for six weeks, have a mandatory site visit for all the contractors to go ask any questions. And hopefully we get good bids on these projects so we can get these going forward. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Mitchell. Any questions from the board? Any questions to the audience? Oh, go ahead.
Just a brief one. So will there be any cosmetic work, any painting or anything after you do all the?
Yes, so there is, the plans and specs are attached, but we realize two thousand pages is a lot to go through. But there is a lot of work, building, safety, life safety of the building, but there also is cosmetic details in the interior and some of the exterior at both libraries, giving it a more modern, modern look to libraries.
And just if the board would like to know the stack of documents that are there, if you'd like to read through those in the next fifteen seconds, you're welcome.
That's why we have clerks of the board to read it for us. Any other questions? You want to pick a color? Do we have any questions in the audience? Yes, ma'am. Put up the microphone.
I'm sorry. With the recent revelation of that involved the library, will it delay the construction? I don't know, to get to specifics, to call out certain people?
So if, this was in place before we have that librarian in place. It's just part of the way it goes. She will handle the construction. We have people in, in staff that can pick up where she left off. And a little bit of news, I guess we could say we're gonna move the county, the county library downtown Hanford. We rented a spot for it. We got the rent approved two weeks ago, three weeks ago. And so once we have ready to start construction, we have place to move the book, so people have access to our library during construction.
Will there be an investigation in regards to see if county finances were involved?
Yeah, that's a board, that's a personnel matter. We can't comment on personnel matters in public.
Okay, that's why I was wondering, because if county finances were used, then would it cause a delay with the development of public library?
No, we're good. We just, you know, we, we did what we had to do here yesterday and everybody innocent till proven guilty. Everybody has, had their chance in court.
Okay.
Thank you, Mitchell. Any other questions?
The move, Mr. Chair.
Move by Supervisor Nevs, second by Supervisor Thayer. Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert Thayer.
Yes.
Four in favor, one absent. We'll go item number two, Mitchell.
So item number two, another big project for Public Works Department here. Before your board this morning, requesting the approval of the construction agreement with Granite Construction Company for the Avonoff Cut Off Roadway Improvements Project. This is phase two. The existing Avonoff Cut Off Roadway from State Route one ninety-eight, as you know, you all are aware of, Avonoff Cut Off is in bad shape. Last year, we were able to complete the first four and a half mile stretch of that roadway from one ninety-eight just south to Twenty-Fifth Avenue. That project went well construction wise, under. Um, that project went well construction wise, um, under budget and on time. Uh, so we're trying to continue that, uh, the next four point seven miles of the Avenal Cut Off, so we'll take off from uh Twenty Fifth Avenue just north of Thirtieth Avenue. Um, we're planning to use the same uh strategy we did uh with the phase one, so full road closure. Uh, we will have a detour from Jackson Avenue, uh, Jackson Avenue to Nevada or Jane Avenue on the uh Fresno County side. And it'll also be Jackson Avenue to State Route forty one, back to Nevada Avenue for both northbound and southbound traffic. Anticipated working days is sixty, uh, so approximately three months. Project is completely funded through the SB one uh monies. So general fund will not be affected, and the total construction for phase two was four point six million dollars, with Granite being the lowest of um about six or seven bidders that submitted on the project. Um, we worked with Granite on phase one. Um, they did really good, uh, so we're hoping that the second phase um goes smoothly similar to the first phase. Uh, so we're um asking your board to approve the construction agreement uh with Granite Construction Company, uh, so we can get this project started.
Thank you, Mitchell. Any questions from the board? Any questions to the audience? Yes, Rebecca.
Um, I was just wondering in regards to the Avenal Cut Off, is that pre or post from the pedestrian bridge for Kettlemann City?
That's completely two separate items.
I know, but yeah, I understand.
Your post in.
As in for how?
Construction wise or?
Yes, cuz if it's supposed to be, if it was done before um, the, for the Kettlemann City, if it was done, all the paperwork and everything was signed before the Avenal Cut Off, or if it was post, so?
Well, the difference is the Avenal Cut Off is county road, and Highway forty one is a state highway.
Okay.
Completely two different animals.
Okay, that's why I was wondering if that.
It's completely different funding sources, completely different projects, contracts, um, programming and planning for them, completely separate.
Okay, that's why I was wondering.
Thank you. Any other question? Same done, uh, bring it back to the board.
The movement chair.
Move by super by the navs, second by super by the there, man, of course, please call the roll.
Joe Navs.
Yes.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson, Robert there.
Yes.
Or in favor, one absent. Thank you, Mitchell.
Thank you.
We'll go now to administration, and we have Giselle Go- Goi. Hi, Giselle.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Giselle Coy, Administrative Analyst, Kings County Administration. Before you this morning is the Electric Vehicle Charging Pilot Program, which is being proposed as a new employee benefit, offering onsite access to EV charging stations for employees. The proposed pilot program will run for six months from July first, twenty twenty five through December thirtieth, twenty twenty five, and is designed to assess the feasibility, demand, and operational impact of providing workplace EV charging. Currently, there are nine Level Two EV charging stations and installed at the Kings County Government Center. Currently, our county fleet consists of three hundred and ninety-four gas or diesel vehicles, eighty-two hybrids, and one all-electric vehicle for a total fleet of four hundred and seventy-seven. Of these seven chargers, they will be designated for employee use while two will remain reserved for county fleet vehicle, excuse me, county fleet vehicles during business hours. After hours, all nine chargers will be available for fleet vehicle use. During the pilot period, employees who wish to participate will be able to use the chargers free of charge, with costs covered by the Public Works Budget. The total estimated cost of the six-month pilot is twenty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine, based on maximum usage and peak energy rates. But the actual costs may vary depending on usage, seasonal rate changes, and pricing structures set by Southern California Edison. The EV charging stations and motor pool are built separately through Southern California Edison and are not connected to the county solar energy program. As a result, there are no direct solar rated, solar related energy savings associated with this pilot program. The Government Center's solar energy system supports other facilities but does not offset the cost for the EV chargers. The program will not have a fiscal impact on the county general fund, and any future changes to the program's fee structure will be evaluated after the pilot program ends. Employees who wish to participate in the program will need to register as authorized users, submit a completed EV charging agreement, and sign a waiver of release and liability. These documents outline clear guidelines for usage, responsibilities, and legal protections for both employees and the county. Charging stations will be available during regular business hours from seven AM to six PM, Monday through Friday, with a maximum of two charging sessions per employee per week, each session limited to five point five hours. Access to the chargers will be controlled through a county issued radio frequency identification card, ensuring secure and accurate tracking of usage. The program offers a valuable employee benefit by providing convenient access to charging stations at the workplace. The data collected during the pilot period will evaluate usage patterns, operational impacts, and the feasibility of expanding the program in the future. A final evaluation will be conducted at the end of December, twenty twenty five, to assess the program's effectiveness and decide whether it should be continued or modified. At this time, we respectfully ask your board to approve the Electric Vehicle Charging Pilot Program policy for a trial period of July first through December thirtieth, twenty twenty five, and approve the EV Charging Pilot Program Agreement for employees and the waiver and release of liability. I appreciate your time. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Giselle. Any questions from the board? Any questions to the audience? We have, uh, the sheriff coming up. You've got an electric car there, Sheriff?
No, never. Uh, Sheriff Dave Robinson, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a suggestion. You know, the programs like this roll out and, and sometimes they uh tend to leave out the shift workers that work nights and weekends. If I can make a suggestion, it doesn't have to be part of the pilot program. I know that that's only six months, but if the program is continued in the future, it would be great to include those of us that have a lot of shift workers, so that way it's not just a Monday through Friday business time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's a good idea. Period.
Mr. Chairman, we can actually make that modification if your board uh desires, so we can see how the tracking is for the next six months.
Okay, yeah, we gotta include everybody, so that's good, good, good observation. Uh, how's the board feel about adding any shift workers? Yeah, we're good?
Okay, I can bring a revised um estimate, cost estimate, including the twenty-four hour Monday through Friday.
Yeah, we'll see. I mean, we saw experimental, so we, we won't know how it works until we're all done, so. Very good. Thank you very much. Uh, bring it back to the board for direction.
Who's amended the chair?
Move by super by the navs, second by super by the there, and of course, please call the roll. Yeah, Dave came up.
Apologize. Joe Navs.
Yes.
I mean, I know he's not public, he is an employee, but he did come up when I asked the question.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert there. I'm not trying to correct the chairman, I'm just all time.
Yep, yep. Uh, we're moving on. Uh, item two, consider waiving of the second reading uh to adopt the ordinance, amending section two dash four point one of King County Government Code ordinance pertaining to Office of County Superior and Road Commissioner.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
Members of the board, um, my name is Michael Amin, administrative, administrative analyst, Kings County Administration. I'm here this morning to present the second reading and request adoption of the ordinance amending Article one, chapter two, section two dash four point one of the Kings County Code of Ordinances. This amendment reaffirm and clarify uh, um, clarifies the consolidation of the county as county surveyor and road commissioner roles under the authority of the Director of Public Works and arrangement or uh, arrangement or uh originally established by ordinance number six eighty-two in April of twenty uh, twenty seventeen. The updated ordinance maintains the co- consolidation while strengthening the county's ability to fulfill um professional licensure requirements when the appointed director of public works does not hold those unnecessary uh, uh credentials. To address this, the amendment um authorized the county to dis- dis- designate another qualified employee, retain a part-time licensed professional or contract with public or private agency for support. These changes ensure county officer uh, continuing of service and operational flexibility. There is no immediate fiscal impact for this action. Any further costs related to staffing or con- um contracting service with um will be evaluated and addressed through um the regular budget process. This ordinance was introduced and the first reading was waived at, at your May thirteen, twenty twenty five meeting. If adopted today, a summary will be published um as required under Government Code two, five, one, two, four, and the ordinance will take effective thirty days from adoption on June nineteen, twenty twenty five. This amendment has been reviewed and approved by County Council as to form and um align with the county's broader goals of organizational efficiency and service co- continuity. At this time, we respectfully ask uh your boards to cons- consider waiving to second reading and adopt the ordinance me, uh, ordinance amending section two dash four point one of the Kings County Code of Ordinance pertaining to the of Office of County Surveyor and um Road Commissioner. Um, thank you so much for your time. I'm happy to answer any question.
Thank you, Michael. Any questions? Good. Any questions in the audience? Any comments? Nothing. Bring it back to the board for direction. Move by super by the Robinson, second by super by the navs, man, of course, please call the roll.
Joe Navs.
Yes.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert there.
Yes.
Or favor one absent. We'll go on now to item number three. Alex.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Alex Seawalker, Administrative Analyst for Kings County Administration. Pursuant to section nine, three, three of the California Penal Code, the county are required respondents to the findings and recommendations outlined in the grand jury's report entitled, "There is a Need for Mental Health Clinic in Kings County." The response to the grand jury's report has been prepared for the board's consideration. On March fourteenth, twenty twenty five, the county received a copy of the grand jury's report, which requires a response from the board. In order for a response to be timely, the board must issue it within ninety days or by June twelfth, twenty twenty five. Attaches to proposed letter by staff for review and approval, and below is a short summary with the county's response. For finding one and recommendation one, the county acknowledges the importance of mental health crisis facilities and mobile crisis units. The county has been successful in launching mobile crisis teams, which operate twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. The mobilization of the county's behavioral health crisis teams respond to individuals in crisis in the community, alleviated a need for residents to rely on nine-one-one emergency services when they're experiencing a crisis. As announced on May twelfth, twenty twenty five by California Governor Gavin Newsom's office, Good Samaritan Hospital was awarded a Behavioral Health Continuum Infrastructure Program, known as BCHIP Grant, for the construction for Crisis Stabilization Unit, psychiatric health facility, and crisis residential treatment facility within Kings County to serve adults eighteen years of age or older. Paired with the county's mobile crisis teams, these services will ultimately create more effective intervention and meet the unique needs of each individual experiencing a crisis. Please note that findings two, three, four, and five have the same recommendation, and for clarity, are responded to in one combined answer. On finding and recommendation two, three, four, and five, the county acknowledges the important role that mental health services provide for the community and taxpayers alike. Counties often contract with entities who have expertise and experience in constructing and operating these highly specialized settings. By contracting with an external entity, the county shifts financial risks associated with facility operations, such as fluctuations in patient volumes or reimbursement rates, and the partner entity assumes the operational risks, including staffing challenges and regulatory compliance issues. The county's Public Works Department and Community Development Agency were actively involved with the county's behavioral health department in providing guidance and feedback for the initially considered joint BCHIP application with Good Samaritan Hospital. Given the unique requirements and deadlines of the BCHIP Grant, ultimately Good Samaritan Hospital applied as a sole applicant with letters of support from the county. The county will continue to monitor its capacity and evaluate fur- future opportunities and partnerships to benefit the residents of Kings County. At this time, we respectfully ask your board to A, authorize the chairman to sign in response to the Kings County Grand Jury entitled, report entitled, "There is a Need for Mental Health Clinic in Kings County", and B, authorize the clerk of the board to submit the response to the presiding judge of the Superior Court honor before June twelfth, twenty twenty five. I appreciate your time and available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Yeah, I do. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Alex, I mean, I, I just heard you read all of this. Did you say, did you say the number of beds publicly? I mean, did you? So I, I recognize, I guess rhetorical question, there's eight to sixteen treatment beds?
So there are some limitations with reimbursement. I believe it's eight for each facility, Dr. Lewis. I believe that's correct. Except for the crisis sa- um stabilization unit, for those online who may not have heard.
No, and I just, I just say publicly, this, this, this is, is, I don't know, it's kind of like waking up Christmas morning and your stocking is full of really good news and that, and this is just, this is really neat for our community. Um, you know, from the law enforcement capacity for thirty-five years. Um, we've, we've, we've never, this community doesn't have this, these kind of resources, and I've said this many times in public settings that, that if you have cancer, we can treat you in this county. If you have a broken leg, we can treat you in this county. But God forbid you have deep mental issues that these kind of beds have, we don't treat you. And, and we put you in a car or an ambulance and we ship you off to some other part of the state away from your family and your, your network. Um, so this is just really, really good news for, for our county and, and at least kind of like step one on a long staircase that is still yet to come, but just super excited. Just wanted to put that on the record that uh, this, this is good news for our county. Thank you for presenting it.
It's your board's pleasure. I can respond to the other country if you'd like.
Sorry. I turned it off suddenly, I can't breathe.
See more at the same time, motion.
Uh, motion uh by supervisor Robinson.
Second.
Second by supervisor Navs, now of course, please call the roll, and this is on item three and.
That's item three and four of the behavioral health issue.
Right.
Still gonna go on to.
Right. We'll go to number five.
Yeah. No, no.
Would actually be item three, A and B.
Correct.
Correct.
Two, three, A and B.
You okay with that, Rusty?
Yeah, we're good.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
Yep, I gotta have myself.
Yes.
Joe Navs.
Yes.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yeah.
Robert there.
Yes, thank you very much. Three, uh, four in favor, one absent. Alex, continue for on item number four.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under the same authorities and same calendar, the county received another grand jury report entitled, Home Guarding Community Service District. Below is a short summary of the county's response. Finding one and recommendation one, the Home Guarding Community Service District is aware of its responsibility to have an audit completed annually, and in August twenty twenty four, reached out to the Department of Finance for assistance in hiring a certified public accountant, known as a CPA, to complete their overdue audits. However, after several firm names were provided, Home Guarding Community Service District was unable to successfully hire a firm due to a lack of response. Since the Department of Finance currently does not have capacity to perform an audit, the Department of Finance will issue a request for proposal, RFP, utilizing county resources to engage an auditor. However, given the time it takes to complete an RFP and the amount of years that are needed to be audited, the Home Guarding Community Service District will not have its outstanding audits completed by June first, twenty twenty five. Per California Government Code, costs incurred by the county auditor, including contracts with or employment of CPAs and making an audit of every special su- special district pursuant to this section, shall be borne by the special district and shall be charged against in any encumbered funds in the district available for that purpose. Finding two and recommendation two dash three, the finance department will be available should a Home Guarding Community Service District reach out to the county finance department. And then lastly, finding three, recommendation two dash three, the Department of Finance has tra- a tracking system to ensure that all special districts located within the county of Kings are in compliance with auditing requirements. For those special districts with outstanding audits, the Department of Finance has sent requests for audited financial statements and will begin working with those special districts to ensure that there is a plan in place to get those audits completed. Although the county proactively tracks and offers support to special districts, the county is not solely responsible for a special district's compliance with audit requirements. State law delineates that special districts are inherently responsible for their finances as special districts are subject to the laws that apply to cities, counties, and other forms of local government, as well as the audits of district finances and regulatory compliance of its own operations. The Home Guarding Community Service District is an independent special district, serving independently from other government agencies, providing its board members autonomy to fulfill its mission of the district. The county will meet its legal obligations while also respecting jurisdictional boundaries and rules. At this time, we respectfully ask your board to A, authorize the chairman to sign the response to the Kings County Grand Jury Report entitled Home Guarding Community Service District, and B, authorize the clerk of the board to submit the res- and B authorize the clerk of the board to submit the response to the presiding judge of the Superior Court honor before June twelfth, twenty twenty-five. I'm available for any questions you may have on this item. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Alex. Any questions in the board? Any questions in the audience? Adam Burke, please bring it back to the board. Oh. A move, Mr. Chair. Move by supervisor Neves, second by supervisor Robinson, Matt Burke, roll call, please.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson? Robert Thayer?
Yes.
All in favor, one absent. All right, Matt, Alex, you got one more to go.
Yes, sir. Third time's the charm. Before you this morning is a letter of support for a five million dollar earmark for the planning and design of the F-35 aircraft maintenance hangar addition at NSA Lemoore. The project formerly known as Tactical Surrogate Hangar will expand the existing hangar and provide essential airfield payments, taxiways, operational storage, support infrastructure, flight line security, fencing, road extensions, and parking for the F-35 fleet's operational squadrons. These upgrades are vital to supporting the mission, essential operations, training, maintenance requirements of the F-35C, the Navy's most advanced fire fighter aircraft. Without this investment, NSA Lemoore will be unable to fully support its operational demands of the fleet, potentially compromising readiness and effectiveness. NSA Lemoore is the Navy's only West Coast master jet base and the largest master jet base in the Navy. NSA Lemoore is home to Commander Strike Fighter Wing Pacific and Commander Joint Strike Fighter Wing. More than half of the Navy's F-eight eighteen E F Super Hornet aircraft reside here and is the only Navy installation to house the F-35C Lightning Two. As the West Coast home for the F-35C, NSA Lemoore plays a critical role in the Navy's mission and the need for a modern, purpose-built maintenance that support facilities that become increasingly urgent as the fleet continues to expand. Their project will not only improve operational readiness, but also provide significant county and the surrounding region supporting local jobs and driving economic growth. If approved by the board, paragon government relations to county's federal lobbyists will support staff in distributing the letters. At this time, we respectfully ask your board to A authorize the chairman to sign letters of support in favor of the community project funding requests for the planning and design of the F-35 aircraft maintenance hangar addition at Naval Air Station Lemoore. I appreciate your time and available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Any questions from the board? Comments? Questions or comments from the audience? Becca? Mr. Director, questions to me, Becca?
Okay, that's why I was wondering why he was gone. Anyway, that's why I was wondering why is the county picking up the five million dollar bill when it's a military facility?
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to answer that question? The county is not picking up the bill. This is a letter of support for an earmark. This will be federal funds delineated by Congress. This is part of a competitive application, and it's not guaranteed that the Navy base will receive these funds. However, the letter of support may help them in receiving those funds.
Okay, so it's just to support and it's not asking the county for five million? Okay.
They're just supporting them.
That's why I got confused. It's like, where did we play a part in that? If it was just more for, what is it, financial support, or was it more for morale support?
No, the hangar probably worth like thirty, forty million dollars. We're supporting the five million dollars asked to earmarks.
Okay. Okay. All right. Cool. Thank you.
Okay with that? Okay. Uh, we've already got questions on the board, question in the audience, Matt Burke, oh. Direction, some move. Move by supervisor Neves, second by supervisor Robinson, Matt Burke, please do roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson? Robert Thayer?
Yes.
Four in favor, one absent. Thank you, Alex. Appreciate it. We'll go on now to board member announcements and reports, and we'll start with supervisor Neves.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With the rest of you, you attended the Mid-Kings GSA Board Meeting last Tuesday. Wednesday, attended the Peace Officers Memorial. Outstanding job by CHP and, and all of the the different law enforcement agencies in the county. Very much appreciated. Attended the Calviva Finance Committee Meeting on Thursday. Discussed a lot of the mayor, the governors may revise and impacts operations, especially in, in in Medi-Cal, uh, Medi-Cal, uh, managed care, man account. It will result in some premium increases to some individuals in Jan, starting in January of two thousand twenty-six. That'll also have some adjustments to, uh, we also adjusted the enrollment due to some of the state and federal standards. Um, but we went ahead and moved forward with an estimated two billion dollar spending plan, offering medical coverage to some four hundred and thirty-seven thousand souls in the three county region of Madera, Fresno, and Kings. At the regional commission meeting a little bit later that, uh, that afternoon, uh, the reappointments from Fresno County were ratified. The elections of chair and vice chair were also done, and all of the other, um, reports were reviewed. Um, as I said, there are approximately four hundred and thirty-two thousand enrolled souls in the three counties. Thirty-eight thousand four hundred and sixteen of those are in Kings County that currently have health coverage. On Thursday evening, the South Fork Kings held its May meeting. Um, we reported on revenue. Want to thank Eric for helping out with that revenue anticipation advance. That's been paid back to the treasury. Um, and the cash flow continues to meet expenses. Uh, but we are going to keep that line of credit open and any, anytime that we have encounter one of those issues in the future. Uh, we also talked about some of the language. Mary's working on that, moving the order directors from the current five configuration to seven, and that draft will be coming to this board for discussion at some point in the future. On Friday, I attended the Employee of the Quarter presentation, and that will be recognized by this board in June. Also received the Kings County Party Department overview by the fire service personnel. Certainly thank them for that. Friday, we went to Corcoran to attend the Farmer's Market. Um, Saturday, the all eighties class reunion of Lemoore. That's the classes in the eighties, not the people attending in their eighties. But, uh, it was a, um, a, a, a cool evening. So we, we spent a couple hours there, but then we, we cut out early. And then yesterday, the Kings County Homeless Collaborative had their updates. Annual report will be coming to this board in the, in the next couple of months, probably in June. Received all the updates on permanent supportive housing, the low barrier shelter, and all the subcommittees. Also to note, there is a shower trailer that will be going out to provide services to the unhoused individuals. Uh, they're taking that out for kind of a shakedown run today. Um, and that will be available probably in the very near future for some of those housed, unhoused individuals to be able to have showers um, in there wherever they happen to be at. So with that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. But there.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few things. I was, I missed last week, but I'll speak briefly about that. But since the last meeting, um, just a quick shout out to the Hanford Police Department, specifically Captain Letts, um, that I'd received a phone call from a constituent that lives up in the north, north side of the city of Hanford that complained essentially that their, the street in front of his house was like the, the front stretch of the Indianapolis five hundred. So Hanford PD was real quick to set up a radar trailer out in that neighborhood, and within a week, Captain, um, briefed me on the, on the, the radar trailer, the, the overall speed report they had, and that they obviously have some speeding issues that in that area around the time the school gets let in or gets, school starts, the school lets out. So if you live up near Pioneer Middle School, I'd suggest slowing down. And Hanford PD will be out working traffic in that area. So again, shout out to Captain Letts, Hanford PD. It, over the course of the last couple of weeks, have had the distinct pleasure along, I know with supervisor Robinson, um, with HSA, behavioral health, public health, just an overview of, of, of their budget processes, how their revenues work. And, and the services that they provide in our, in our county, and very grateful for three great department heads that, uh, that walked us through that. And I also had the opportunity to meet with fire personnel on an overview of the fire department, big chief and, and Blake Adney and, and Ed Ryman for that, uh, that, uh, presentation. On Saturday, the third, I mentioned this one, when, when she passed away, but, but, but had the opportunity to attend Emily Carpenter's Miss Kings County Celebration of Life. Uh, it was very well attended, many great speakers, um, just reminisced about her impact in our community and, and just, you know, one, one quick thing, which I didn't even know about. I've only known her for I don't know about eight months before she passed, but that, and when she was running for Miss Kings County, she, she knew that her life was short, that it was, there was essentially, um, the treatment options for her were, it had gone, had come and gone. And so through that process, if you, you know, just reminisce back on those pictures of her wearing that Miss Kings County crown, that she knew her day was, uh, her days were short, but yet she still powered through to do this. Um, um, anyway, so I know, and I know, Mr. Chair, you mentioned, you know, maybe next year, uh, you know, bringing back and acknowledging her life and whatnot, would appreciate that. Um, also, uh, let's see, last Friday or a week ago Friday, that's why I was on this last week, if you ever have the opportunity to go out and visit the beautiful state of Kentucky, uh, traveled out there with my wife and some friends, and we, uh, did our first bucket list after my retirement, which was the Kentucky Bourbon Trail. May or may not be detoxing at the moment right now, but nevertheless, uh, saw just a beautiful part of our country from Kentucky down into Nashville. Had, had spectacular weather other than, um, that, that after we saw the beauty of, of, of the few of these states, is those devastating tornadoes pour through there. So if, if you're a praying person, keep that part of our country in your prayer, the devastation was, was incredible to witness on the news. We, I, we didn't experience it ourselves, uh, being there, but nevertheless, uh, we returned late Saturday evening from, uh, from Nashville, uh, with, with just a few moments left to spare to watch our future daughter-in-law graduate from Fresno State University. So congratulations to Chris on, on, uh, on her hard work there. And then, um, uh, Monday, yesterday, attended, uh, again with, with Supervisor Robinson, the public health overview from Rose Mariner staff and, and, and that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, supervisor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, let's see, last Tuesday, attended the Mid-Kings River GSA supervisors. Also, the Armona Community Service District meeting. Uh, it was a pleasure. I got to, got to talk to old supervisor Doyle Davis. And, uh, and we spoke again about Armona Park, which led to a meeting the following day uh, at the, uh, at the school. And, um, and so we, we spoke again about the park, and there is some interest uh, at, on the elementary school district of getting together and figuring out the park situation. We certainly are waiting funding, and that might be a hard thing to find this year. But once we do get funding, I think that we might be able to do something. Uh, Wednesday, attended the Peace Officer Memorial, keynote speaker, Sheriff Robinson. Um, Thursday, San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District. Um, it was sad to bid farewell to Mayor Prestiato. It was his last meeting on the board. Yeah, he was a good contributor there. Also, um, uh, a mixer hosted by the Building Industry Association at the Vintage Press and by cellular supervisor rebellion. So it was a good chance to see supervisors from, uh, from Tulare County, city councilman from, from Kings and Tulare County. And, uh, and thanks to Rosemary Ron and staff for, uh, for the public health meeting yesterday. Thank you.
Very good. We'll bring it back to Kerry Martinez, we'll remember, or for board correspondence.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the board received nor correspondence as of this morning. For upcoming events, Kings County Behavioral Health is sponsoring their tenth annual community walk and mental health awareness event hosted by Oak Wellness Center, which will take place tomorrow, Wednesday, May twenty-first, from nine AM to one PM at the Oak Wellness Courtyard in Hanford. For upcoming agenda items, I believe we have twenty-three items as we are dark for May twenty-seventh board meeting due to Memorial Day. So administration has four items. The recognition employee of the first quarter, introduction ordinance amending, uh, the, uh, Code of Ordinance for the Surveyor and Road Commissioner roles, appoint the Child Abuse Prevention Coordinator Council, and appoint the Kings County Library Advisory Board. Ag Commissioner has two items in agreement with the state on some enforcement activities and some weight master enforcement activities. Behavioral Health has a First Amendment to Women's and Visions Unlimited for Sister Speaker Group Support Group, a First Amendment to Medi-Cal Peer. Support Specialist Certification Program, CDA has one item on the monthly reporting for the Planning Commission Action. Elections has one item regarding the enhancement, election technology improvements to election security. Fire has two items, some service agreements, and second reading of Fire Prevention and Protection Ordinance. Health has two items, a purchase of a, actually a few purchases, a portable air conditioner, power breezing misting fan. And HSA has an item regarding in-home supportive services, public authority fiscal year budget increase. IT has an item on Central Square Tech Technical Support Service Renewal from Finance Enterprise. J two has three items, the Conduct Adult Dislocated Worker Career Service Day, uh, the Local Workforce Development Board Recertification, and the Workforce Development Local Plan for Years twenty-five through twenty-eight. Public Works has an item regarding Kettleman City Infrastructure Sidewalks. Probation has one item on a donation design approval for artwork in, at Behavioral Health Rehabilitation Academy. Sheriff has two item on some garbage disposal purchase and M O U on Kings paragraph. I conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go to close session as outlined by counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item is Government Code Section five four nine five seven, Public Employee Appointment slash Employment. Title Assistant County Administrative Officers. The second item, El Rico GSA is being polled. The third item, Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine, Conference with Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Paragraph Two or Three of Subdivision D of Section five four nine five six point nine of the Government Code, Two Cases. Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine, Conference with Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, Initiation of Litigation Pursuant to Paragraph Four of Subdivision D of Section five four nine five six point nine of the Government Code, deciding whether to initiate litigation to cases, and I will turn it back to the chair for any public comment.
Thank you very much. At this time, uh, we will adjourn until eleven o'clock today for a California Public Authority meeting, eleven o'clock for in-home supportive services, public authority meeting. And then at one o'clock, we have a Board of Legalization meeting. And, uh, we will be back here as Board of Supervisors on June third, nine AM. Thank you very much. Have a nice weekend.